MNN in partnership with League of Women Voters of the City of New York presents Race to Represent: Multimedia Coverage of Manhattan Elections, Council District 6 Debate.
The League of Women Voters of the City of New York and Manhattan Neighborhood Network are pleased to welcome you to the candidate debate for Council District 6. The Democratic primary will be held on Tuesday, September 10th. The winner of the September 10th primary will be the Democratic nominee in the November general election. Hi, I'm Rosemary Shields and I am a member of the League of Women Voters. All candidates will be running in the new council districts that were drawn by the New York City Redistricting Commission following the results of the 2010 census. Each district represents approximately 168,000 residents. Council District 6 represents the Upper West Side and Clinton. For this debate, we'll have several rounds of questions and we'll try to get to as many topics as we possibly can. The candidates will have up to one minute to answer each question. I will choose the candidates to answer in random order. The candidates are seated here in the order of their closing statements, which were determined by law. Let me now introduce the candidates. To my left, Deborah Cooper, Aaron Brownstein, Noah Gottbaum, Mark Landis, Mel Weinmore, Ken Bieberay, and Helen Rosenthal. I will start with question one, and I will start it as I just did the introductions, and you'll have one minute, and after that, I will choose someone else. The Democratic candidates for mayor have proposed modifying mayoral control of the schools. What changes, if any, would you like to see? Do you have a position on putting charter schools in the same buildings with traditional public schools? Ms. Cooper?
I want to thank the League and MNN for doing this. In terms of mayoral control, I think that it should be modified to make sure that there is significant parental involvement. The last administration has really disdained the degree of parental involvement, and there should be a lot more of that. I know that there is something afoot in Albany to actually even get rid of mayoral control. I do know all the mayoral candidates prefer mayoral control. I am not in favor of charter schools, and I'm certainly not in favor of co-locations, because at the moment, we're co-locating, at least in our neighborhood, elementary schools and high schools, and we will find that as the student population increases, that we will need that high school space in the future. And so it is not a good use of space, and I think charter schools have an inimical effect on public education. Thank you.
I am Aaron Brownstein. Being in the sports industry for over 30 years, I have different theories on education, like they do in Germany to have vocational schools. So if the child is not a great wizard at school, let's give him a vocation, apprenticeship. Germany has the least amount of unemployment in the entire Europe, if not the whole world, because of that reason. Not every kid wants to go to school and be like Albert Einstein. I have a daughter who liked to be in the theater. I encourage that. Child wants to be in sports, encourage that. To force a child these days to stay in school if they're not happy with it accomplishes nothing. So I think that each district should have its own leader person, not just one big mayor like we have now, even though he's doing a great job under the situation. But change is needed, definitely for every child to be able to learn a craft in case school does not work out.
Public education is probably the most important issue our city faces. It's one-third of the New York City budget. It is an issue that I have been working on ceaselessly for the last seven years. I was elected the president of Community Education Council District 3, which encompasses the Upper West Side and Harlem. I am the only candidate among these seven who sends my kids to public schools. I believe in public education, but that means fighting against mayoral control. I have come out for years to change the structure of the Panel for Educational Policy. I don't just say it. I have been to the PEP meetings time and time again, organizing parents, bringing them out. In terms of charter schools, originally, a good concept, but what they have done is they have undermined our schools, undermined our public schools, where 4% of the kids are taking over resources for '96. It's wrong. I have been a leader for years, not just on the Upper West Side schools, but throughout our district in Harlem. I'm known as someone who has been a leader on this issue, and it has undermined our schools. We need to get back to straight public education.
There's no question that we need reforms in the current system of mayoral control of the education system in New York City. The current administration, the Bloomberg administration, has shown all too frequently that opportunities for parental input have been de facto rather than opportunities for meaningful participation. My recommendation is that the Panel for Educational Policy be restructured to ensure that while the mayor may have a plurality, the next mayor should not have a majority vote. The mayor should be able to persuade other people in the education community that his or her ideas are best for the system before moving ahead. I'm proud of my work in the schools. I was one of the parents that helped organize to create the Frank McCourt High School in the Brandeis Building on West 84th Street. And I was very disturbed when the administration decided the following year to move an elementary charter school into a high school building, when a charter school was not necessary in that location, was not desired, and it was illogical to put five-year-olds in the same building with 19-year-olds. I brought the community lawsuit to stop the Department of Education from moving forward.
There's no question that education is the gateway to both personal and societal success. In terms of New York's public education system and the system on the Upper West Side, we need to make sure that every child has a place to go to school, that our school capacity is broad enough to make sure all kids get to go. I was instrumental in negotiating the school at Columbia, where kids get to go on a need-blind basis, as well as negotiating the school at Riverside Center, which will provide 800 seats to alleviate some of the overcrowding in our district. Beyond that, the question of mayoral control, I believe that schools are communities, and when parents and teachers and administrators work together, the kids get the best education possible. With mayoral control, we've seen too much top-down communication and not enough bottom-up. I would make sure we strengthen the PTAs, the parent involvement, and also perhaps even subdivide the size of the districts so that superintendents could really empower parents and schools. In terms of co-locations, I would want to make sure that no overcrowded school is a target of any co-location at all.
Thank you to MNN and to the League for hosting this. With regard to education, we absolutely need to work to tone down the volume, to work more collaboratively. It's unconscionable that the mayor and the teachers' union weren't able to come to agreements, putting at risk half a billion dollars that could be coming to our school system. We need leadership at City Hall from the mayor to the city council that will work collaboratively to engage parents, provide the resources that we need for teachers, and ensure that every seat in every school is the best possible. We have limited space, unfortunately, on the Upper West Side because we've had such overdevelopment, and we haven't built the school capacity that we need. I want to fight to make sure that my newborn, when he's ready to go to school, has a seat on our block. The preschool program at PS 87 has a 4% acceptance rate, and that's not acceptable. We need to look creatively at the limited space that we have and work with the community to make sure it's maximized for the benefit of the most residents possible. And I'm committed to working with the mayor to ensure that mayoral control is used in a way that best serves our entire community.
Well, thanks so much for hosting this debate. I really appreciate the League and MNN bringing us all together, giving us a chance to talk. You know, mayoral control has not worked so much on the Upper West Side, both from hearing from parents and giving them a real input in the education of their children. I certainly have testified in front of many PEP meetings and felt the frustration of not being heard, to co-locations of charter schools where it's been to the demise of the public school in the building. You know, we're dealing with charter schools that don't play well in the sandbox, and that hasn't helped our public schools at all. The larger issue about mayoral control, though, is the way they've set up allocating resources to each of the schools and to the networks. And here, what they've done is they've allocated money in such a way so as to take away money and take away power from individual schools, and that's something we have to stop.
Thank you. The second question I'll give to Mr. Weinmore, and then we'll go to the right and then around.
Okay.
Affordable housing is rare in Manhattan. What can the city council do to preserve and expand the number of affordable housing units?
Affordable housing is essential to making sure the Upper West Side can maintain a healthy middle class, along with public education. I have a record of producing affordable housing in our community, including the negotiation of the first-ever permanent affordable housing at Riverside Center, where 600 families will be secure in their homes that they can afford for the duration of the time they need it. I have also been a huge advocate for affordable housing in terms of securing the affordable rents that already exist in our community. And that means advocating at the city level against the state level, who has jurisdiction over affordable housing policy. I would make sure that the Rent Guidelines Board includes tenants' members, and the way in which we negotiate rent increases needs to be reformed altogether so that we can make sure that affordable rents don't leave the system. Finally, I'd like to say that we need to have a comprehensive analysis of affordable housing, so that SOOs, Mitchell Lamas, rent stabilization, all of the forms of affordability get analyzed in bulk, so that we can see what the needs of our community really are.
Thank you.
We face so many challenges in maintaining our existing affordable housing stock, let alone expanding. It's unfortunate that the state legislature allowed vacancy deregulation and luxury deregulation to come through in a way that has terribly damaged the Upper West Side. And the situation was exacerbated by the buyouts of landlords of Mitchell Lama buildings, who took units that were affordable for 30 or 40 years and made them unaffordable for people once again. We're going to need throughout the city to preserve the housing we have, which means reforming the Rent Guidelines Board, bringing local control back, working with our Albany legislators to repeal the Ersstadt Law, so that New York City will have control over its affordable housing stock. In addition, we need to build more affordable housing throughout the city. We need to incorporate concepts like mandatory inclusionary zoning to make sure that every new development of a certain size includes affordable housing for working-class and middle-class families. And we also need to build more affordable co-ops and condos, because affordable ownership is a path to permanent affordability.
Part of the issue with affordable housing is an issue with a number of issues going on in the city, and that is that those who built this city, working people, seniors, have been pushed out, and the pendulum has swung so far against them. People are trying to hang on. On the Upper West Side, it's happening every single day. And the issue is that our city council has to be strong. We have to be independent. So while a number of candidates, Mr. Landis, for example, talks about reforms and changes, he is taking money, his livelihood is from a slumlord. You cannot do that and then advocate for those in our community. What's happened is we need independent leadership to really change that pendulum and advocate for our entire community, not for the development community. I will do that. I have done that. I did that at PS 199 and 191, where they wanted to demolish those schools and bill luxury high rises. I came out strong and said no. Other candidates waffled. We have to have strong leadership in the council to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Landis, would you like a rebuttal?
Yes, I would.
I'm sorry, for 45 seconds.
Sure. It's unfortunate that Mr. Gottbaum would continue to spread the same kinds of lies that he's promoted earlier within this campaign. The so-called slumlord that he refers to is a recognized affordable housing operator and developer who has acquired properties from negligent owners and improved them. But this has nothing to do with my livelihood. I am on leave of absence from my law firm. I am a full-time candidate for city council. I'll be a full-time community servant.
Thank you.
It's Aaron Brownstein again. I just wanted to state to everybody on the Upper West Side, my campaign's completely self-financed. I'm not taking a penny from anyone. I don't have to answer to anyone. The main thing for children is to send them to school so they can make a living, a livelihood. I would right away stop all the rent increases in my area for 20 years. They raised me every year. I have no one to talk to. Everyone who's been in office for 12 years has really wasted my time. That's the reason I'm running at this stage of the game. I'm not a spring chicken anymore. The Arctic Commission, every child has to be taught to make a living, and doing this crazy rent game is ridiculous. The garage rent is over 600 a month already. Why do you need all these garages in the city? Why can't you make the garages into affordable housing? If there's a will, there's a way, and I always accomplish the mission. Currently work at West Point. My father was a combat pilot in the Air Force. No matter what the task, I accomplish the mission, and it's my own money going down in this campaign. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Cooper.
It's just that the timer's off. Okay, sorry. Okay. Okay. The issue of affordable housing is integally tied to the fact that the city has growing an enormous inequality, and the fact that we are losing affordable housing that we have at present increases that inequality. So, one, it is crucial to maintain the affordable housing we have, and a lot of that is under rent control and rent stabilization. And it is crucial that we try to create a political coalition to get back our ability to control our own home rule, our own destiny. The other part of creating new affordable housing is I have a rezoning proposal that puts together buildings so they are no longer going to be built as of right, but have to go through a community board process in which there will be affordable housing demands. And one of the considerations should be, do we change the ratio of affordable housing from 80/20 to 70/30? And do we change the formula for determining what is affordable? Because New York is based on the region, and the region is Westchester, and there are different standards for Westchester and the City of New York.
Thank you.
You know, the next city council, the next city government must be laser-focused on stabilizing the middle class and helping working people advance. Affordable housing is a key ingredient to that, and at every turn, I've done what I can to help residents, tenants in Mitchell Lama buildings and in public housing and in rent-stabilized apartments. So as Chair of Community Board 7 at my first meeting, a member of the tenant leader at Stern House came and talked to us about losing their permanent affordable housing, their Mitchell Lama status, and immediately, we called together a group of leaders in the community and found permanent affordable housing for them. When Trinity House was about to be taken over by a predatory equity landlord, we banded together again and fended off that landlord. Now we're working on a tenant-led buyout to keep that housing affordable into perpetuity. I'm proud to have the endorsement of the tenants advocacy group, which represents over 2 million rent-regulated tenants in New York City, and I'll continue to fight for them.
We need to have a comprehensive approach to dealing with housing, and that calls for advocating for an increase for SCRI, so that our seniors don't feel threatened, that their income levels are going to come up, and they're going to be forced to the streets because the increase hasn't taken place. We need to work to reform NICA, so that all of the residents on the Upper West Side who live in public housing are able to get the repairs they need, to have the quality of life they deserve, and shouldn't be nickel-and-dimed constantly to be squeezed on a regular basis. We need to look at the middle-class families that actually own their co-ops and condos, that have seen their taxes skyrocketing, their water bills skyrocketing, their maintenance skyrocketing, and putting a real squeeze on the families that have made the Upper West Side so special. Our neighborhood is vibrant and unique because of the diversity. In the next 10 years, if the West Side is just banks, Duane Reeds, few rent-control apartments that are remaining, and million-dollar apartments, then it's not the community that we all love and cherish. And we need to fight and make housing a top priority next year, because it really hasn't been so far.
Thank you. My next question will go to Mr. Brownstein, and then we'll go to your right and around. The city council receives approximately $50 million in discretionary and member-item funding for the 51 districts. What is your position on how this funding is allocated, and who determines how the money should be used?
First of all, we really need a change in the Upper West Side. Anyone who's been in office for the last 12 years, we know it's not going to work. We've seen that. I've been in the Upper West Side 22 years. Every year, it's the same ballgame, keep raising the rents, and the politicians and the big real estate lawyers tell us fairy tales. How's that? As a candidate who's a successful businessman, who's a very good communicator, having my own talk show for over 20 years on TV and radio, I've met a lot of the big politicians. It would take an independent person like myself, who doesn't have to account to anyone. Anyone who's taken money to run for office, they have to answer to somebody. The main thing, again, I've raised five successful children, six grandchildren. It's a child must make a living. I understand in Japan now, which is doing quite well, eliminated the force that a kid has to go to school if they don't want to. And again, Germany with having...
I think we need to finish.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very sorry for talking so long, but I'm so passionate about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This will be a new city council with a new speaker, and I think it is very important that, if elected, that I negotiate over who the speaker will be, and one of the conditions will be to baseline basic private earmarks. I think the present city councilwoman has done a remarkable job at knowing her neighborhood and recognizing which places need the earmarks money. And I think I would not take it away from the councilperson for figuring that out, because this has always been done, I thought, very ethically and compassionately on the Upper West Side. I think the councilperson knows their district and knows who needs help, and that to just sort of put it into a baseline program solely would not be fair to the small groups throughout the neighborhood on the Upper West Side. So I would continue doing a lot of the same things that the present councilwoman has done, because she's done a remarkable job.
You know, discretionary funds are the lifeblood of many small not-for-profits on the Upper West Side and throughout the city. They're a very important allocation. What we need to do is give a base allocation to every district, and then an additional amount based on need. So, for example, someone who's in the middle of Brownsville might need a little bit more money to support their local not-for-profits. But discretionary funds can do so much. I happen to be Chair of the Board of a not-for-profit called Parent Job Net, and we're funded primarily through private grants, individual donations, and discretionary funds. And we're able to use that money to help public school parents train for and eventually find jobs. You know, this is a program that would not exist without our discretionary funding. In addition to that, we need to advance participatory budgeting throughout the city in all 51 city council districts. This is something that about a half dozen members have used over the last two years. It's a way to engage people in democracy, engage voters on how their money should be allocated, and I'd love to bring that to this city council district. Thank you.
I think residents on the West Side and across the city have great concern, rightfully so, on how some of the member items have been used, from corruption, waste, abuse, and I think we need more transparency, more accountability, but we have to be able to preserve some of the existing structure of having member items and discretionary funds to support the exact nonprofits that my colleagues are talking about. There are so many wonderful groups that can be models across the city if we give them the appropriate resources that they need on the Upper West Side. And I think Gail Brewer has had her finger on the pulse over the last 12 years and has been able to identify group after group and support them with these funds, and if she wasn't doing that, they wouldn't be able to exist today. So we certainly need to ensure that our government resources and our tax dollars are not being wasted, are not being put into slush funds, are not being abused, but are getting to the communities and to the individuals and the groups that deserve it. And as a council member, I would fight to make sure that groups on the Upper West Side are protected, and that we can hopefully scale them more citywide.
20 years ago, I started a food program on my block with the help of discretionary funds from then-councilmember Ronnie Eldridge. And we're still serving those people in that food program today, based on funds from already budgeted items in the agency's budgets. So member items are important as seed money, but I think we can actually look at a plan that might eliminate or objectively distribute member items by having a fast-track kind of access to the budget for these small microprograms. I would also say that I sat on the steering committee for the very first implementation of participatory budgeting, specifically because when I was Chair of Community Board 7, I wanted to see how input into the budgeting process might be brought in, not just for member items, but for the budget process as a whole, because member items don't make up so much of the budget. It's really much bigger issues that people should get to know and shed light on and have input into. So I would look at a hybrid system where member items are either objectively distributed based on need, then some formula, or used in a more public way through participatory budgeting that sheds light on an overall process of budgeting. Thank you.
Certainly, we're all familiar with the difficulties and the excesses and the abuses that have taken place with discretionary spending or member items, as they're more affectionately called by many council members. We've seen corruption. We've seen so-called slush funds. We've seen the lack of transparency and the lack of accountability throughout the system. Borough President Scott Stringer issued a report last year calling for reforms, and I endorse those proposals, because the proposals would ensure that funds are distributed equitably, based on objective standards and based on district needs, instead of who's best friends with the speaker. And there would be assurances that funds would be accountable to the public, and there would be transparency. So there would never be a question about who got money and why they got money. There are all too many problems with the system now, where on top of individual member allocations, there are borough allocations and then separate speaker-controlled allocations. And I'm committed to vote for a speaker who will be a reformer, who will make this process fully transparent.
I would reform the system in three ways. First of all, the speaker should not be able to determine overall member item amounts based on political favors and political friends. That has to be baseline. We should also reform the powers of the speakership, and that's something I would focus on, because you have right now unequal distribution. Additionally, we have to have much more transparency. You should not be able to fund an organization which then turns around and contributes to your campaign. Thirdly, I believe that participatory budgeting, at least for part of the allocation, is critically important. But I also believe that, as Deborah said, in our district, Gail Brewer has done a terrific job in terms of fairly funding. But these funds should be seed funds, and as Mel said, they should not make up for the job of the city council, which is to really provide services. So when our member items are going to funding libraries and funding lunchrooms and senior centers, that is wrong. We need to take it on ourselves as council members to make sure that's in our baseline budget.
Thank you. The next question will start with Mr. Bieberay, and then we'll go to your right. And there may be a change in the stop-and-frisk policy. What else would you do to make our streets and neighborhoods safer?
Public safety is the most important thing that we can work on as elected officials. You can't really talk about education, about protecting small businesses, about improving quality of life, if we don't make public safety a top priority. And I applaud some of the work that's been done, obviously, by the mayor to reduce crime, to make our city the safest big city in the country, to make it a place that 60 million people want to visit every single year, and these are things we should do. But we cannot embrace a policies like stop-and-frisk, where we're committing crimes against people under the auspices of, you know, discovering crime, and it's just not right. So stop-and-frisk needs to be absolutely reformed. We need to hold the NYPD more accountable. We need to stop this practice where we're paying out half a billion dollars in lawsuits because the NYPD is doing different things. And we need the council to increase oversight, have more accountability, take a more proactive role, and not kind of just pass off all authority to the mayor and to the commissioner. So I would seek, number one, to make sure that we're holding people accountable, that we're reforming the system, that we're not wasting money on lawsuits constantly, but that we're also working to make sure that the NYPD does have the resources and are utilizing technology like ComStat and community engagement and community policing to make sure that we can repair so much of the damage that has been done by the current practices.
I'm going to stipulate that stop-and-frisk goes away, because it absolutely has to unless there's reasonable suspicion. Beyond that, though, public safety can be implemented... Beyond that, though, public safety can be implemented most effectively when our communities are strong, when our children have a place to go after school, when our parents are involved in the community, when small businesses keep small and are engaged hiring with local residents and keeping their eyes on the street. So it's a combination of the urban design of our communities, to be lower in scale and making sure that there's small businesses there, and also the participation of parents and teachers and nonprofits in the growth of our children. That's what keeps communities safe. And my work in making sure that we have community centers that develop youth and have teen programs that give them leadership opportunities and job training opportunities, and where police get to be involved in neighborhood programs, meeting with residents, block associations, tenants' associations, where meaningful relationships can be developed, that's what keeps communities safe. And I want our city to have that strength by making policies that support those connections.
One of the wonderful things about the Upper West Side is that our neighbors watch out for one another, and nowhere is that more critical than in the area of public safety. And we do all agree that stop and frisk has gotten out of control and needs to be reformed so that meets constitutional muster. But there's much, much more to public safety than that. We need to return to having police officers on the street, on foot and on bicycles, instead of just having them riding around in cars. Because whether crime is low now or higher now than it was a couple of years ago, and thankfully, in the Upper West Side, crime has been down, and violent crime is very, very limited, having the interaction between police officers and the community is an important part of strengthening bonds. But public safety is more than preventing criminal acts. Public safety is also making sure that our communities are safe. We need to implement a slow streets program and reduce the speed limits in our neighborhood so that our seniors and our children and anybody who is suffering from any physical limitation doesn't have to take their life in their hands every time they cross a street. Safe streets is the way to go.
Let's be very clear. Stop and frisk, the way it has been practiced, is an outrage. It targets entire sectors of our community, and it's completely wrong. That said, part of the reason that stop and frisk has gone this far is because the council has not practiced the oversight over the mayor and the police department as required. And I'm not talking about a statutory oversight. I'm talking about making sure that there is views by the city council to look in. We've had a lot of quotas on arrests, on stop and frisk. And that's outrageous. That's coming from the mayor. The city council needs to establish its rightful place, to ensure that we, as an independent body, are providing the oversight and that the mayor is not acting on his own, and the police department is not acting on its own, but rather working as part of the community. But the police department also needs to get the support. We can't be cutting positions. We can't be establishing quotas for arrests and then hold them to blame. So it is a dual system that has to be put in place.
I want to state, if something works, why fix it? I think the NYPD are the most intelligent, common-sense police force probably in the world, if not for Tel Aviv, Israel, which I have experienced. As all my colleagues are stating, everything politically correct. What about the fact that Mayor Bloomberg is retiring shortly, and I think Kelly is moving on to a government position? So everything's going to change in a matter of a couple of months with the new election coming up. Has any of my colleagues discussed who's the new mayor, who are we going to talk about, all these theories? I'm completely politically incorrect, in the sense that I like working with the community, the neighbors. This week, they're all complaining to me that Big Nick, who's been in the neighborhood over 30 years, is going out of business. He raises rent from $40,000 to $60,000 a month. Very wonderful Greek-American family. All the small people come to me all the time, and it's enough, Freddie. What are we all going to do about new mayor and new police commissioner before we stop frisk, whatever it's called? Thank you.
You know, I often say that without justice, there is no safety. And the problem with stop and frisk, as used by this mayor, is that it is violating the Fourth Amendment, which is a fundamental right to be searched upon reasonable suspicion. And that we need to maintain. But what stop and frisk does is it targets young men, mostly of color, and it actually creates, puts them in a position where they wind up being criminals, just even for talking back to the police. And the problem also is that it affects how the police treat the rest of us. It isn't just that it affects how the police treat young men of color. It creates an arrogance in the police. And the police are meant to protect us and not control us. And so I do support the IG program that has passed the city council. I would even strengthen it by making it responsible to the city council and not to the mayor. I think it is very important that the police understand what their job is, which is to make sure that the community is protected and not that they are in charge of this community.
You know, stop and frisk, as it has been implemented by Bloomberg over the last 12 years, has become an absolute disgrace, and it needs to end. Instead, what we need to focus on is intervention programs. We need to focus on community policing, to the extent that the police are going to be involved. But you know, I'm not surprised to see this after the last 12 years of cuts to social services and human services programs, and to the Department of Education, and to after-school programs over the last 12 years. What we need to do is we need to get back to our roots. What is it that government is supposed to pay for, and what is it supposed to do? You know, I worked in City Hall in the Budget Office under three different mayors, and I know what it takes to make sure that government is funding the programs that will keep our kids out of trouble, that will provide good after-school programs. And that's where we need to be focusing our administration in the next city council.
Thank you. The next question, I'm going to start with Ms. Rosenthal, but then we're going to go to Ms. Cooper, and we're going to go to the stage left. Do you support the zoning change to increase the size, height, and bulk of commercial buildings in Midtown?
Oh, my goodness. I am so completely against Midtown rezoning. This is, you know, this is like Bloomberg's last hurrah giveaway to his developer friends. What we've seen on the Upper West Side is commercial and residential development to an extreme, and so much so that we need additional public infrastructure to accommodate all the new residents coming in. And we don't have that public infrastructure, which is why our schools are overcrowded. Fundamentally, he's... We need to stop him from putting this through in his last six months, and instead, you know, start to discuss it anew in the new city council with the new mayor. If we want to have new development, residential and commercial development, we need to start with what are those developers doing to help our communities? Make sure that they're going to bring in 20% to 30% affordable housing. For commercial redevelopment, what we need to do is make sure that local independent businesses are given an opportunity to thrive in our neighborhoods. So no, I'm absolutely against this redevelopment proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
The Midtown redevelopment proposal is... The theory is build it, and it will come, which is the infrastructure will somehow magically appear after all the buildings have been built. And as we know on the Upper West Side, from promises that were kept, that weren't kept on the buildings that we have had, for instance, along the river, that that doesn't happen. And it is really crucial that if you are going to do any development, and the city is growing and the population is growing, that the infrastructure be in place before the extra development occurs. And it is also indeed crucial that the developers... They're building in New York City, because it is the premier city in the world. And they would build here no matter what. So one of the things we need to make sure is that they're not getting any more tax breaks or tax credits that undermine the tax base of New York City and means that the rest of us have to pay more in taxes to make up for what they're not getting. So I certainly think that we need to have thoughtful, serious planning for growth. But this is... This plan does not seem to meet that criteria.
Thank you.
So the object of the mission is to stop unemployment. So if Mayor Bloomberg, who's obviously a brilliant businessman, wants to make tall buildings for commercial reasons, that's great. That would mean more jobs, wouldn't it? So the object of the mission is as low as possible unemployment in all our young people to get jobs. How are you going to do that unless you increase commerce? I can't take anymore. Everything, Duane Reade, everything is banks. By bringing in small businesses where it's attractive rents in Midtown would create tens of thousands of jobs right away, without a question. So I'm for rezoning and making much taller buildings in commercial areas. Thank you.
The Midtown rezoning plan is a terrible idea. It is a last-gasp effort by the mayor to give away to his friends. We do need thoughtful planning, but this is not it. We have seen this overdevelopment on the West Side unabated. And it's one of the reasons I'm running. The council must act as a check. It must act as a balance. Right now, the community is not being represented here. The development community is being represented. And we've seen that in our own district. Right now, we are being overrun by high-rises, overrun by Duane Reades, and yet, we have not had the checks on those developments. The community board did rezoning, where a couple of the candidates here were leading the community board, but they carved out major developments, which ended up overburdening us. We had a proposal by the mayor, similar, last-minute proposal, to demolish our schools by Lincoln Towers and by Amsterdam Houses, without any input from our community. And I was the only candidate who came out and said, no, we've got to stop this. We have to have independent leadership that is beholden to our community, not to the development community.
Thank you.
I'm proud of my work in fighting the proposed developments at PS 199 and PS 191, working with our Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal, who has endorsed me, and nonprofit organizations like Coalition for a Liveable West Side, for whom we've learned so much about the perils of overdevelopment on the West Side. The East Midtown proposal doesn't make very much sense, not at this time, not at this place. It is a last-minute giveaway by the mayor to rush something through before he leaves office. Meanwhile, there are new commercial developments that are supposed to come online in Hudson Yards. It's unclear whether our economy can support more high-rise office buildings in East Midtown. This is all much too soon. The mayor has not been a conscientious steward when it has come to development issues in Manhattan. While they've done good things with Governor's Island, they haven't been so nice to Manhattan Island. He began his administration by trying to push through a West Side stadium that we didn't want, that we didn't need. And I was proud to serve as one of the pro bono attorneys to block that from happening.
I'm against the Midtown zoning, especially because the strong analysis around what infrastructure impacts there would be are not yet assessed. I would believe we need a full citywide review process before going to that level of rezoning. I'm the only candidate in this race who stood toe-to-toe with mega-developers to really bring together a community vision for how we want our community to look and win real results for our Upper West Side community, including a brand-new public school, K-8 for 800 students, permanent affordable housing, and $20 million for our parks. Also, I'm the only candidate in this race who has pledged to be an independent and honest broker on behalf of our community with respect to developers. I receive no money from developers, no money from landlords, and no money... Landlords who are known to give away their permanent affordable housing or let it go vacant and evict their tenants, and no money from PACs. This is the kind of stance you need in order to protect our communities and ensure the fabric of our quality of life.
Development is going to happen all across New York. New York City is about developing, redeveloping, getting better, getting stronger. But what we have to do is make sure that we're protecting and being good stewards about the communities that are impacted. So with Midtown East, I just think the entire process is happening way too fast. To Deborah's point, we need to put the infrastructure as a top priority, and that needs to be the initial thing that is the conversation starter. How are we building an infrastructure to support such growth? We can't necessarily stop this development and this growth. We need to have the foresight about where New York is going in the next 20, 30, 40 years. We need to understand we have to be globally competitive to have new office space and so on. But we can't do it at the risk of our infrastructure, of our communities, and of the character of our neighborhoods. And I would really hope that this could slow down a little bit, and then I would want to get into the council and really work with all communities across the city to make sure we're building smarter and more comprehensively and looking at all five boroughs as we develop such things.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Mr. Landis, and we will go to his right. The infrastructure has been deteriorating for years, and we have suffered water main breaks, and our streets and bridges need repair. How will you get the financial resources to bring the city up to speed?
There are many steps that need to be taken to improve our city's finances, both in terms of capital improvements and infrastructure and dealing with our operating budget as a whole. Our city's tax structure is not as progressive as it should be. And we do need to increase income taxes on those who can afford to pay a little bit more to make sure that we sustain our city's economy and sustain our human services and social services needs. As for the infrastructure aspect of it, the city needs to go to the capital markets and look at opportunities to float green bonds, make sure that the infrastructure improvements are done in an effective and environmentally sound and conscious way, so that our city can be planned and the city can have advanced planning, make sure that we're building for the next 20 years and 50 years and 100 years, instead of doing quick fixes and bandages that don't meet our needs in the short term.
We have to accomplish this infrastructure through a couple of ways. One is certainly more revenue generation. That means higher taxes for those who can afford it. I was on the forefront of pushing our Democratic Party, of which we have some leaders here, to reinstate the millionaire's tax. It was simply a giveaway, which was not necessary. We have to have more fair share in terms of the taxes. We also have to invest in our infrastructure. It creates jobs. It creates economic opportunity. It is the basis upon which this city is built. So we really have to work to invest in that. How do we do that? Part of the money has to come... We are putting out $2 billion and $4 billion of incentives to keep businesses here where they're not creating jobs. We have to end the system of welfare for some of the corporations and instead, invest in our infrastructure and also invest in our social services. These infrastructure jobs are solid jobs, and they build our community. And so we need to increase revenues, but we also need to stop some of the corporate giveaways and focus on investing in our infrastructure.
There's three ways of doing this. First, I can't believe anyone was against building a football stadium in the West Side. I'm in the sports business. Would have created 43,000 jobs immediately for New Yorkers. Why are two football teams in New Jersey, the Jets and Giants, with billions of dollars? Then I'm looking what happened in Nassau and Suffolk County with the lighting thing when they had that fiasco. The way to bring in money is you have to privatize, possibly Con Ed, and you have to have bonds. Bonds will work. Wall Street is here in New York City. I believe in New York City. Immediately, I'd want to put up that beautiful stadium on the West Side. Why not? The worry about traffic? They could pay more people to drive cars. The answer's in front of our face. You don't need all this tricky, like, political talk. We know how to do business in New York City. You got to build, privatize, and bond. It's that simple. Thank you.
The city's budget is dependent on the fact that we don't have home rule. Most of our funding comes through income taxes, which is controlled by the state of New York. And we need to be able to regain the ability to control that in order to put forward more progressive taxation, in order to make that the default position. And I am proud that I wrote the resolution in the Democratic State Committee, despite the governor's desire for me not to put it forward, on extending the millionaire's tax. And two years later, two months later, the governor did indeed change his position on the millionaire's tax and put forward more progressive taxation and put forward more marginal, higher marginal tax rates. So I think that funding the city is a process that requires changing the conversation and changing the political dynamic of where that money is coming from. Presently, interests on bonds are incredibly low, and we can afford to go into the bond market and get very reasonable rates in order to do the infrastructure repairs that we need.
You know, I agree, we have to invest in New York City. We have to invest in our infrastructure. We have to grow our economy. During the time I worked in the Budget Office in City Hall, I worked with a team of people to start something called the Primary Care Development Corporation. And what we did was draw down a tiny... And what we did was draw down a tiny amount of city dollars in order to leverage federal, state, and bond revenue, as well as private foundation donations, to start new primary health care centers in New York City. It's since gone statewide, and we've either refurbished or started 90 health, primary health care centers throughout the state since 1992, and it's created 2,300 good-paying jobs. We need to use that creative thinking. We need to use that understanding, real deep understanding of how the city's finances and how the city's budget works in order to invest in New York City. We also have to close the carried interest rate tax loophole, which helps developers pay a very small tax rate at a time when they're taking advantage of what New York City has to offer.
We need to look at this in a comprehensive way. Investing in our infrastructure is an investment that allows people to get across the city, to go to jobs, to create businesses, to go to schools, and so on. We need to look at retrofitting buildings, allowing for financing so that our co-op and condo owners can actually have some kind of financial support, to have the incentive to actually be more energy efficient, to be more, to conserve more resources and energy, take pressure off our electrical grid. And we need to be thinking smarter about where we can conserve, where we can alleviate some of the strains on our system, and then where we can make smarter investments, whether it's the MTA and streamlining the technologies so that the trains run more efficiently, whether it's expanded select bus service on our streets, whether there is just more financing alternatives. We need to approach this in a comprehensive way for every new development, requiring developers to make those investments in our infrastructure as part of deals when they're building new developments, because the city is, is aging very rapidly, and we're not making it in a holistic way, the investments that we need to.
The city's at a point where we have a huge opportunity to invest in our future through infrastructure. Infrastructure makes, creates jobs. It creates a long-term perspective of the city, and it can make our city sustainable. I would advocate for investment in all kinds of green infrastructures that pay for itself, including recycling programs and waste scrap management programs, energy production programs that come from geothermal, wind, and solar energies. I would also advocate for local food production and build the infrastructure for, around that, so that we actually don't have to spend a lot of money to bring a lot of resources into the city. Beyond that, I would pay for those things smartly by congestion pricing programs, commuter's tax, and even the millionaire's tax. We can also take waste out of our budget where we're not creating a lot of, when there's not a lot of transparency in our budget, there's many opportunities for just cutting out waste and investing that money back into our, our city. So overall, as a systems engineer, I feel we also have to take a comprehensive approach and invest in our infrastructure.
Well, thank you, candidates. We're running out of time. This has been a terrific bunch of topics that you've been answering, but I want to each, ask each of you, and we'll just go down the line, starting with Ms. Cooper, just 20 seconds.
20 seconds, okay.
About 20 seconds. How has the New York City's public financing program affected your decision to run for office?
I wouldn't have run without it. I think it is absolutely crucial to, in order to make sure that everyone has a chance to participate, that we have a public finance system. I think it is sad that, that people like Mayor Bloomberg who have so much money means that they get to dominate in the public arena, and I think that that is something that we need to deal with in the future.
Reason I got involved was because they raised our rent again, and many people at our building on 81st Street came to me and said, do something about it. So I'm taking all my retirement funds and running on this, and the whole trick is you can't answer to nobody. If you take money from somebody, you owe them. Also, Wall Street is right here in New York City.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Public financing system in New York is terrific. We should be extending it to the state. Unfortunately, we're not doing that. Our party has not led on that issue, really should. Additionally, we can't have legislators who have other jobs. That creates a conflict of interest. So beyond public financing, I would be pushing for full-time legislators at the city level and the state level.
I'm proud of my work in helping bring the campaign finance system into being in New York City. As Chair of Citizen Action of New York, Citizen Action was the leader in getting it done and put the pressure on the city to eventually adopt a system, not a perfect system, but a pretty good one. It's one of the reasons why Congressman Jerry Nadler has endorsed my candidacy. He's a leader of public finance movement at the federal level and hopes we can implement what we've done here in New York City.
I love the New York City campaign finance laws. I think we need to even make them stronger by increasing the match and decreasing the minimum contributions. I think it'll bring more people into the process, and the more people that we bring into the democratic process, the better decisions we're going to be making and the higher quality of life will be for all of us.
The, the structure of the campaign finance system is one of the reasons why I was able to decide to run. I'm someone who's a little bit outside of the established political culture on the West Side, and when I saw the, the amazing matching program, it allowed me to go to my network, to, to the community and grassroots, and really reach out to people. And in the very first filing, I was able to report that I raised all the money for the entire election from over 850 people, and it allowed me to get more people involved in this process, and that's only a good thing.
You know, I too love campaign finance, and I've run my campaign fueled by donations of $20 or less. So over 60% of my donors have given $20 or less to my campaign, and, you know, Ken's done an amazing job. Over 20% of his donors are $20 or less. The other people running, it's fewer than 10% of their donations at $20 or less. So I love campaign finance. It's the only way I could really be in this race.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to closing statements, and again, we'll start with Ms. Cooper.
Okay. Are you starting? Okay, I'm an unabashed progressive leader who thinks that with the right wing pushing back against us, we always have to push forward, and I have always done that through my entire life. I've been a board member of NARAL Pro Choice New York, and I know that from my work in women's reproductive rights, that if you aren't pushing forward, you're being pushed back. I think it is really crucial that we, in this community, that I work to make sure that the community stays affordable, that education is attainable for everyone, that old people can age here, that young people can start here, and that the middle class can thrive. The other thing I want to say is that a third of the city council is women, and we are on track to lose women in this election. And I think it's very important to have that voice on the council and have, make sure that there are women who are going to be there in the future. I'm very proud to have been endorsed by Congresswoman Carolyn McCarthy, the NARAL Pro Choice New York, the Progressive Change Campaign Committee, and New York Communities for Change, and I thank you for this time, and I thank you for hosting us.
President Obama calls me Rocky, Rocky Bronstein. Like, five years now. I'm a fighter, a fifth-generation New Yorker. We're contrarians. My great uncle, Al Jaffe's Mad Magazine, my daughter Natasha Leon. I've run successful sports programs in the Garden, concerts, et cetera. I know how New York works. I understand how Wall Street works. The answer's in front of our face. Need a fighter like me who knows how within New York to raise all the money we need to do all the programs we want. By having that, we could allow the middle class to stay. It's only common sense to be like a real New Yorker. I want to thank the Women's League and MNN, and keep on punching.
Thank you, Women's League and MNN as well. This is a critical election. The city council has to regain its place as a strong counterweight to the mayor, to be independent of the interests of money and the development community to a large extent. And we need to start right now in this election. My whole life, I have fought for social justice. We have too many have-nots right now and too few haves. We've got to change that dynamic. 25 years ago, when we saw that during the Reagan era, I stood up, I brought my friends together, and I founded New York Cares, one of the largest social service agencies in New York City. About 10 years ago, I got working in the environmental area. I was, ran one of the largest recycling companies. More recently, I've been involved in public education. I'm passionate, as I said, I have skin in the game. My children are in that system. I've been fighting to keep that education system strong, focus on it. I hope to follow in the footsteps of my father, Labor Leader Victor Gottbaum, my stepmother, former public advocate, Betsy Gottbaum, to bring independent, strong, progressive leadership to the Upper West Side, and I hope you'll vote for me, Noah Gottbaum, on September 10th. Thank you very much.
As I said before, the Upper West Side is a wonderful community to raise a family and where neighbors watch out for one another. But when our neighbors are being pushed out of their homes because the rent keeps going up, or they can't afford to stay in the neighborhood because their kids can't get into a good public school and they're settling for a SO SO public school, things have to change. I'm proud of my work in helping to open Frank McCourt High School and fighting on behalf of all the students in the district. I'm excited that I worked with Assembly Member Richard Gottfried to bring a lawsuit against a bad landlord, a bad not-for-profit landlord, who was doing mass evictions of women who lived in the residences just so they could turn the properties into condominiums. We can't run New York City that way. We have to look to New York City and the Upper West Side in particular as an opportunity to be a laboratory for progressive ideas and progressive policies. This is the work I've done for the last 20 years, and I would be proud to bring that experience to the city council. My name is Mark Landis. I'd like to thank the League and MNN for hosting this debate.
My name is Mel Wymore, and I'm different in this race because I am an independent, and I've produced the results over 25 years of the things we've been talking about here: housing, education, land use, small businesses, social services. All of these things over the last 25 years, I've actually produced concrete results. You can't just talk about it. You need to take the initiative and make it happen. I've negotiated new school capacity. I've negotiated permanent affordable housing. I've saved small businesses by working with Gail Brewer to create zoning that keeps our storefronts small and improve the character of our neighborhood. I've worked with preservationists and architects and engineers, and I'm an engineer myself, bringing a whole new way of thinking to the city council. These are the kinds of people we need representing us on the West Side, and I would be proud to represent the West Side as the next city council member. Thank you.
Well, thank you. My wife Valerie and I love the Upper West Side, and we're excited to raise a family here. I'm running for three reasons. The first is to support the quality of life on the West Side. The second is to invest in our community's future, and the third is to stand for the values of the neighborhood. Now, I fought for the progressive values on John Kerry's presidential campaign. I worked to reopen the Russian Tea Room because I believe in New York's institutions. I sit on the Culinary Council of the Food Bank because I believe no New Yorker should go to bed hungry. I mentor first-generation college students because everyone deserves the same shot that I got. I believe I have the progressive principles and the civic experience to keep the West Side moving forward, and if you give me the honor and privilege of representing you in the city council, I promise I will fight every single day to bring new ideas and new energy to the challenges we face. I'm Ken Bibaray, and I hope to have your support on September 10th. Thank you.
You know, I appreciate the opportunity to have, to start to talk to voters about these issues. I have found it challenging to give answers in a one-minute time block, and I hope people will go on my website, www.helenrosenthal.com, to see the work that I've done and learn about the work I've done over the last 20 years. I worked in City Hall under three different mayors, and then I brought those skills to this community. You know, Ronnie Eldridge appointed me to Community Board Seven over a decade ago. I was elected chair two times. Ronnie has now endorsed my campaign, and I've worked hard to take the know-how, the City Hall know-how that I've been trained to do to help bring a new school to the Upper West Side, PS 452, to set the stage for more affordable housing and a new, brand-new school at Riverside Center. And I'd like the opportunity to continue to work very hard on behalf of the West Side, so I appreciate your opportunity. You're looking in and watching this show and giving us a chance to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We had a very lively, thoughtful discussion, and as a member of the League of Women Voters, I want to remind viewers that for more information on voting, the candidates, your poll sites, you may contact the League of Women Voters at 212-725-3541, or go to our website at www.lwnyc.org, and please check out our Vote 411 on the League of Women Voters website. Remember, only registered voters enrolled in a political party having a primary election may vote on September 10th. All registered voters, regardless of party, vote in the general election on November 5th. So dear viewers, go out and vote, and thank you for tuning in, and thank you, Manhattan Neighborhood Network and the candidates.